Are we ready to start with the work session?
Yeah, go for it. I'm just gonna eat my sandwich.
Okay. We're on. So, the work session for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project update is called Order.
Thank you Chair Cavilla. No kidding.
Scoot over a little bit, too far away.
You can come up for three minutes.
Wait a minute, I've gotta start timing you.
Thank you Chair Cavilla and Planning Commissioners. Tonight, we are continuing our update to the Willamette Falls Legacy Project with our Planning Commissioners as we move forward and really transition out of the visioning and public engagement barnstorming that we've been working on this whole summer and fall, and moving in towards preparing the land use application and to the Planning Commission and City Commission hearings this summer. Tonight, we'll have a presentation by Mike Zylas with Walker Macy and along with him, and Ben Schoenberger with Winterbuck Planning, which is Walker Macy's sub for the land use application. Ben Schoenberger's gonna talk a little bit about what you will see in the land use application, not necessarily the details, but kind of the bigger picture and the issues. And when you get that wonderful email from me in a month or two with the link to the land use documents, kind of prepping a little bit what you'll see. I also attached last week a document that had proposed land use dates and future work sessions with our consultant team. Those, of course, are proposed dates, but we plan on coming back to you once the land use application is submitted on some of the detail items, especially all of the code amendments proposed. And Ben will talk a little bit about those today. So, really, my goal tonight is to provide an overview of the master plan and the work that's gone to date, the proposed framework plan, review some of the beautiful inspiration drawings that Walker Macy has put together that will not be part of the framework master plan, but are part of the larger vision strategy document that will also be prepared concurrent with the land use application. And the last thing I'd like to do after we're done tonight, I'd like to go across the table and kind of hear from you about what are the issues you're tracking as we move forward this spring, so I can get a handle on some of the issues you, firstly, necessarily are concerned about, but the issues that you want to know more about, so we can target those when we meet, next meet with you. So, right now, I'd like to start out, we have about a 30-minute presentation with both Mike Zylas and Ben Schoenberger, and then we'll open it back up to questions, and I, Tony and I can come up here as well and answer them for you.
Thank you.
I think they said to her first. We're very excited to be here tonight. We've, our team, which includes the City of Oregon City, Metro, Clackamas County, State of Oregon, community members, consultants, have really pulled together over the past couple of months to bring this plan forward, and we're very excited about the momentum that's been gained, and we're looking forward to the process with you in the coming months to go through the planning approval process. As you know, Lemon Falls is like no other place in our state or our region, and we're just so excited about the potential of connecting the community to this tremendous resource. The industrial heritage of the place is very key, and the current status of the site, as you know, is Blue Heron's been gone for a number of years. There's a trustee that is trying to sell the property and still continues to do so, and we've been working with the trustee to ensure that the framework plan that we're presenting tonight, and we'll be coming back to you for approval in the coming months, will allow a variety of activities to occur on the site. So, we're trying to set this place up for all of its potential. There has been a tremendous outreach that's gone on. We've had seven committee meetings, including at different fairs and events. We've had 45 community engagement conversations, which has been with a wide variety of people. We've had three interactive events, which have included over 100 people at each event, and had tremendous feedback and some really good ideas that were generated. And then there's also been an opt-in survey with thousands of people throughout the region giving their opinions and thoughts about this incredible place. So, the kind of outreach and the outpouring of enthusiasm has been really, really exciting for us. As you know, the site, I'm sure you know the site well, it's over 23 acres in size. It was kind of the founding spot of industrial activity in the state and in the region, and it's looking for the next kind of generation of development. There was a salvage contractor that went through and removed lots of elements, but much of the framework of the site still remains, so there's still some beautiful structures and elements of the industrial past on the site. There were four core values that were established early on, even before we were involved, by the donors, and these four values have carried through all the conversations and really have brought together the community thinking. And I'd like to go through each of the values, kind of explain where we are relative to them. So, the first being historic and cultural interpretation, again, lots of input about the value of the site and the importance of history today, and also building a new history into the future. As you may know, this was a spot or location that the Native Americans used for centuries, and it was a sacred spot. It was a place for fishing, but it was also a place for trade and for ceremony. And we understand why it was such an important place. It's a just magnificent, powerful location. The first pioneer city, Oregon City, was here, and also the beginning of the industrial activities in the, in the West began here. I should point out that building in the center there with the cupola, we'll show you the foundations, some of those elements of these buildings are still there. This is also a place of transfer, so boats would come from the Lower River and transfer goods to boats on the Upper River and vice versa. So, it was a place of commerce throughout its history and still has that potential. I'd also like to point out those, that water that you see coming out of the site, those flows can still, they're still there, they've been cut off by some industrial activities, but water through the site was always part of its history. This is also the place that the ancient forests of Oregon were milled and pulped, so there's a long kind of history of, kind of, natural resource extraction and material development. There are a variety of buildings. We've had, we've got a number of architects, historic architects, as well as GBD architects who do a lot of redevelopment of projects that went through the site, and there's a number of structures that were built that are still there and look like they have potential for redevelopment, this being one of them. You can see the era of that by looking at the cars, but there are, there was an industrial time where the Holly Paper Company came in and built these beautiful kind of industrial buildings. This is number four pick machine there to the closure of the plant, and since then, with salvage operations, all of the equipment has been taken. So, what that allows us to see is finally see the structures and the scale of the place, and we think a number of these structures have great capacity to kind of bring a new history of use onto the site. There's also an interesting mill called Mill A that runs perpendicular to most of the other buildings right out to the river's edge, and it's, it's a wood structure which has some potential for redevelopment. These are the foundations that I mentioned from the Oregon City Woolen Mill, that cupola building, they're still there, they've been greatly manipulated over the, over the years, but those, those beautiful stone walls, much of them are in place, and you'll see them in the, incorporated into the plan. And then the industrial heritage, there's many other elements that were left even after the salvage that speak to the industrial qualities of the place. So, what we've done is we've identified four primary buildings that have, we think, good potential for redevelopment, many others do too, but the orange buildings are the ones that seem to have the best potential. The red outlined is those foundations that are kind of open air right now, and then there's a wide variety of industrial elements and other structures that could be incorporated into a plan. I should point out, what we're trying to do with this whole endeavor is to establish a framework for development into the future, so we're not specifically calling for, you know, specific buildings and that sort of thing, but a, but a framework that will allow all of these elements to be incorporated. And the history continues. This is the Native Americans coming in the late summer to harvest lamprey. They climb through the falls and actually grab the lamprey and take them for ceremony. So, there's still a long history of, of them coming to the site and using the site, and there has been an outreach made. This is the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron that were invited out, and that's the mayor, and if you don't recognize him in the middle. And the dialogue has, has continued about reestablishing their presence in, in a respectful way on this important site to them. We've also looked at a wide variety of examples throughout the world of other mills, industrial facilities that have been revitalized, and we've taken note of how they've kind of come together over time and their success. Next core value is public access. This was the value that we heard the most about in all of the community conversations. Everyone across the board is just thrilled about the potential of gaining access to the falls, to see it and to witness its, its power. And we've had no lack of ideas brought to the table about what people could see on the site once accessed. And these include, you know, places for events, concerts, places for cafes and outdoor activities, markets, ideally farmers' markets and other things. We were, we were specifically reminded that it's definitely a family place too, so to incorporate the abilities for families to come and enjoy the site were important. And then, as you know, the area's all about the river and the water, and providing a variety of places for people to access the water is really key. This is a photograph of the early, early Main Street. So, you know, the pioneer tradition of the place with the wood-framed buildings, those buildings eventually were moved and, or taken down for development of, of the industrial facilities. This is a view into the site right at the gate that you see today, and there was quite a, a long tradition of, of access directly on, along Main Street. The, the grid of the city was incorporated on this site, so the area on the, in the middle of the slide there, that grid of streets, Main Street being in the center, Fourth and Third, and, and Water along the bottom, were a part of the structure of, of the site, and we're, our plan reestablishes those right-of-ways. What that does is allows for easily developable blocks to be available, and it also helps us preserve some of the historic structures I showed you because they were built on that same grid. Access has been a, a large conversation that's been had on many levels. Ongoing conversations with ODOT have been occurring about how to provide additional access to the site because it's, it's an industrial site today, and it's going to change to a mixed-use site, which has a different traffic kind of demand. And the, the key intersection is right at Main and Highway 99, and how to get vehicles in and out of the site safely. We've looked at all different scenarios of flyovers and you name it, connections, but right now, the way it appears that, given the traffic generation, we're anticipating that a primarily on-street solution could be effective by routing traffic around with some new signalization. I should mention, there's still an ongoing conversation with ODOT about even a bigger project related to another access point, but, a route, but, but this system is the one that we're proposing, it seems to be working well. And the reason, one of the reasons it works is we're, we're utilizing Main Street as well as that Water Avenue or Water Street, which is at the top of the slide there. This is a photograph looking at Water Street right from, essentially, right as you walk into the site. This is the old alignment of the street, and our proposal is to continue the promenade along the water's edge, connect people with overlooks and, and viewpoints, and then, if you can see on the left side of the slide, extend the street, so it would be a very welcoming environment to bring people into the, into the site. The proposal is to, again, extend Main Street, Fourth and Third, and Water, and then importantly, to connect a waterfront trail. So, the orange line is a trail that would come along the riverbank and connect to some of the industrial facilities, use those platforms and other things to, as overlooks, but also as interpretive kind of elements, and connect people directly out to the, to the, to the dam, and so they can see the falls, and also wrap around and go to Kanema, so there's a, a bigger trail system. I should mention also that there's a proposal to provide access over 99, that's the dotted line in the middle of, of the drawing, to bring people from the bluff elevation down into the site. This is a view looking downstream. You can see the Arch Bridge in the distance, those are some of those industrial elements that still remain, and the proposal would be to create a trail, you can see on the upper right-hand side, that would be the, the promenade extension, but also provide lowland trails that people could come out and actually get to the viewpoints and, and connect to the history. This is now right up at the, the dam. The yellow areas PG's refers to as the dance floor, it's an, an area that was an industrial element, and it's got the, the best viewpoint for, for the falls. PG's been very receptive to the idea of public access on the dam and allowing people to come out to really witness the entire place. This is the walkway as it looks today. It's clearly an industrial facility, but all those guardrails and pipes and that sort of thing are no longer needed because industrial uses is, is not existing, so our proposal is to obviously keep the dam, but allow people to walk along a, an opened railed system and see both sides and walk right out to the falls.
Could you go back to the one with the, where you show the platform in yellow? So, where was Mill A that they tore down?
It's right, right, oh, I got this one too.
He's gonna put a dot on it. You know, that was the, the building where the first electric transmission went from.
Exactly.
Portland, I mean, Oregon City to Portland, and I'm really sure why that got torn down.
I'm not even.
Actually, it has a lot of historic significance.
Yes, and elements of it still remain. You can't see it in the photograph very well, but there's, there's a number of really interesting things to look at there. Looking back now from that, from the dam into the lagoon area, again, this was the place that they floated the logs in. There were some industrial buildings, and we've been working with the public to, to kind of understand the potential. One potential would be to rehabilitate those buildings and turn them into a variety of uses. We have learned that light watercraft access into that lagoon would be possible, there have to be safety precautions along the dam, but it'd be wonderful to be able to get in a kayak and go upstream along the, the edge of the river there. Another opportunity might be to save some of the buildings and turn the rest of the area into open space, or even the whole entire area could turn into a, a park at the end of Main Street, so you walk up Main Street, get to the open space, and enjoy the, enjoy the river from there. This is now the dance floor again in yellow. This is looking at the, there's a spur line that, that runs to the south to Kanema, and it's really an interesting place because the, the river's very calm and peaceful there. You can see the falls just on the right. It's a really different personality to the river. Right now, the spur line is not being used, and it's had a lot of invasive species adjacent to it. The proposal would be to, to construct a mixed, or a multimodal bike and pedestrian trail and replant the riverbank in native vegetation, so that could be a, a nice connection up to Kanema. And then, as you're fully aware, I'm sure, the place does flood. So, this is the 96 flood, and this is a photograph of the folks up on 99, so this, you can imagine how much water is below them, just incredible amount of water coming across, and, you know, that's been the history of the site. When we walk through the mill buildings, there's marks on the different variety of places and different flood elevations are throughout all the structures. So, when we look at where the 96 flood is in blue, those are the areas that could easily get inundated again, and so our proposal would be to look at those spaces as primarily part of the open space scheme. Now, that's not to say that buildings couldn't be located in there, but they'd have to be built to the right elevation and have connections and that sort of thing to, to be within the hundred-year floodplain. So, the, the plan right now is in those areas to look at, at primarily open space uses. This is down underneath it all. There's layers and layers and layers of industrial development and redevelopment. We'd love to kind of open this up for people to interpret and to see and to really understand what happened there. There's lots of examples. This is Mill Ruins Park in Minneapolis where they did just that. These are flower mills where they left parts and pieces of the mill, but also created walkways through it. So, this is an example we've been using as a really successful public open space that the history of the place is still evident, but it, it is now a new use, which is for public use. Another example in Sydney, Australia, where a petroleum tank farm was once along the river, or along, along the water, that was removed and the place got completely transformed into a public open space. And you can see that they, they left lots of pieces and parts of that, of that facility and then brought in a public connection through it. Healthy habitat is really key also to the success of the plan. We've got lots of good comments about it. This is a, this is always, has been a rocky area, it's never been a kind of a wetland or forested area, it's been rock and water, but there are some plants that grow on the rocks near the falls that don't grow anywhere else because they grow in the midst of, of the falls. And one of the primary things we can do to benefit wildlife here is to provide places for migratory fish to rest. Right now, there's a lot of industrial riprap and whatnot along the river's edge, and if we can, it's referred to as re-ruffening the bank, and if you look at how, how that's kind of jig-jogging in and out, that's really good for the fish as they move up and down because that's a place to rest, and that's what it was historically. So, the biologists have been encouraging us to remove strategic places along the bank and allow for those places to be available to fish. We, we're proposing to improve the river, riverbank vegetation where we can, especially in the northern area here. Actually, have some soil there to work with. Reconnect water through the lagoon. Right now, it's stagnant because the industrial water's not flowing through the lagoon anymore since the plant has been closed. We'd like to re-establish that flow into the outfall areas, which would be good for the lagoon water, it'd also be good to introduce water through the site. Look at restoring some of the rocky habitat up in these zones, and then, as I mentioned, on the Kanema edge, establish native vegetation. And then, a really key, key area, excuse me, is the economic redevelopment, and we've heard lots and lots of constructive suggestions about how to do that. The plan we're proposing, we believe, provides what is needed, which is certainly relative to a new zone and circulation system, but flexibility to allow a developer, a variety of developers, to come in and be successful. We've looked at the redevelopment potential of the site, the yellow areas are zones that look to us like they're very easy for redevelopment, relatively easy, I should say. They incorporate some of those historic structures I mentioned, and there's quite a bit in that area that will allow lots of redevelopment. Just in scale relative to downtown Oregon City, you can see how many blocks that area would cover, so it's quite a bit of square footage. Then those blocks that I mentioned that are in the floodplain, some of the, some of the areas could be redeveloped, but those are primarily the places we're looking for public open space, and the orange is the trail system. This is the existing cross-sections through the site, you can see the height of the bluff relative to the buildings, there's a different scale to this site than you see downtown, and we're interested in, in utilizing that scale, not only as a, as a kind of a connection to the industrial past, but also they, these buildings do provide, and the scale provides lots of opportunities for a variety of things to occur. If, if the buildings, if there are new buildings on the site to be developed, there's lots of different ways of supplying places for residential, retail, light industrial uses. The parking would be key. In the gray boxes, you can see, given the basalt nature, the heartstone nature of the site, the parking would be likely above grade. We could put parking along the back, along the railroad tracks, or in the, in the building on the right could be incorporated within the structure. There's been lots of conversations about parking, and I, and I'm sure you're aware of the conversations of the downtown retailers looking for more parking. If there was a joint structure build, it could work for both, because we've, you know, in other facilities such as this, people are willing to walk to a, to a place like Willamette Falls within, you know, a five-minute walk or so, so there might be a shared parking arrangement that could, that could occur in the future. So, this is the plan. Having said all that, it's a simple street grid, Main Street, Fourth and Third, and Water are established. You can see the development blocks in yellow, the crosshatch yellow are potential development within the floodplain area, but they, the buildings would have to be, you know, built within the code of being in the floodplain, but they also incorporate some of the historic structures, the orange being the circulation system, primary circulation system for pedestrians. Because those plans are hard to imagine sometimes, we went ahead and drew three demonstration plans of what they might look like. You can see the buildings on Block 1, 2, 5, 6, and 7, could be a variety of things, incorporating some of those historic structures, but then, then the open space scheme could be quite varied. In this scheme, the, the pathway, the main pathway is now in dashed red, you can see going out to the dance floor and to Kanema, and the, the center of the site, if you will, is, most of the buildings have been removed, and we've left the industrial kind of quality of the site there for interpretation. This might be how it would look, so it's a very naturalized look at the, at the water's edge, but a nice public open space. At the top of the slide, within the gray walls, right there, those are the foundations from the Woolen Mill, maybe that's a garden or a cafe space. Another way of thinking about it would be to, to retain more of the industrial edge along here and use it as part of the circulation system, and then the open space could take on a different kind of configuration. Or even another variety of, of use where Mill O gets redeveloped, maybe a restaurant goes here, and a different system of circulation moves through in a different kind of open Some of the examples of places like this that have been successfully built are the brewery blocks in Portland where the, the industrial heritage is there and it takes on a new life. This is Main Street today. As you look at it, that's one of those industrial buildings I showed you earlier, and the vision for this site could be quite, quite exciting, where the, you know, it's very lively, the buildings are redeveloped, and there's a vibrant street life that extends from downtown right to the falls. So, in implementation, we've had a, we've had economists and real estate experts on our team, and we've been really focused on the, on the potential for redevelopment. These are the three kind of words that we, they keep talking about. One is patience, it's going to take a while for this to happen, and there'll be many different groups that'll come to the table and, and want to make things occur here, and we have to have a good framework plan to allow that to, to occur. We need to take some action to help spur this on, and there needs to be relationships throughout. The perceived, current perception of the site is that, you know, it is a constrained industrial site. Your city location, while, while interesting, doesn't lend itself to necessarily multimil- Your city location, while interesting, doesn't lend itself to necessarily multimillion-dollar projects coming to town every day and wanting to redevelop industry, and it's a challenging local market. But our opinion is that with the falls and with the idea of public access, we can start to create a market that would spur on that redevelopment. And there's been, again, a long conversation about how to get that started. If you start on the, this end here, the idea is to get access as soon as possible, even if it's modest, and get people connected to the falls and excited about it. The implementation of open space early in the project would be great because that'll help build a there, there, as they say. And then, public infrastructure development will be needed, and then, obviously, private development will be part of the program. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ben, and he can speak to where we are with the planning process.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's Ben Scholberger from Winterbrook Planning. Mike's talked about the sort of outline of the plan and the content of it. I'm going to get a little bit into the nitty-gritty of process and timeline and what we're actually preparing to present to the city in terms of a land use application. So this graphic just shows generally sort of the overall planning process and where we're at. We're in the sort of left column that we've been working on for the last year or so of the visioning and the developing ideas and the doing the analysis and the technical information, and then going out to the community and getting their feedback on this. And we're now sort of approaching that bottom-left circle, which is the land use application itself. But not to say that the process will end this summer, hopefully, when approval of this plan occurs, and that beyond that, to the right, is a lot of work ahead of us. It's a twenty-year plan, and it could go on beyond that even. So there's a lot of work to be done with fundraising and further refinements and individual development proposals within the plan that we'll be proposing. So this is that bottom thing. The general timeline is we're finishing up a draft of the application now for submittal to the city staff. They'll do their review, and then we'll be back in front of you with this plan in mid-April is sort of the general. Then it will work its way through the process from there. So just a quick sort of survey of the content of the land use application. So there are two main elements of the application that we're working on right now, and they are the zone change and the general development plan, part of the city's master plan process. So also, to be clear, there are no specific building projects included in this particular request for approval. So we're not coming in with, we want, or there's no we, there's not a developer coming in with a, we want to build a five-story building and it's going to be located here. It's not that kind of a plan. It's a framework plan where we're setting the ground rules for that kind of development going forward. And the first element for us to be able to do that is to get the zoning changed out of its current status, which is general industrial. So it's a site that has been industrial for a long time, and that's kind of what the zoning allows right now, and it doesn't allow the kind of mixed-use range of uses that through this process, we've heard that people want to have occurring at the site. So the current approach is the creation of a new zone. It's the Willamette Falls Downtown District. This is very close to the city's existing mixed-use downtown zone. There were enough changes to it as we were going through that it didn't make sense to try to cram that square peg into a round hole and modify the mixed-use downtown zone. So we're creating an entirely new zone that's very close, but not exactly the same. One of the distinctions, for example, is we wanted to respect the industrial history of the site and allow some level of industrial uses to continue to be able to occur, and that's along the lines of imagine a beer, a brewery for brewing beer, or some light industrial uses for apparel manufacture, that kind of thing. And the current mixed-use downtown zone doesn't allow that. So that's just one of the minor tweaks that will occur as part of the zone change. So a range of allowed uses is kind of the fundamental core of this new zone with provisions for other kinds of uses that respect the history of the site and the basic development standards that you'll find in any of the zones in the city zoning code.
Such as?
Of, I'm sorry. Such as?
Your sentence said that to allow for certain types of, saying, for example, what do you?
Of a range of uses?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Residential uses, improvement uses, office uses, like I said, the craft industrial kinds of uses. So again, similar to the mixed-use downtown, I think there's about twenty-five different uses in that list, but with a few minor tweaks. So the second element beyond the zone change, once we kind of lay that basis for what you can and can't do in this district according to the zone, is the general development plan. So the general development plan is, as I'm sure you know, is the first step of a two-step master planning process. So seventeen sixty-five, the master plan chapter has general development plan, and then the second stage is detailed development plan. And what we're preparing and submitting to you is just the first step of that, is the general development plan. It's a twenty-year timeframe, five to twenty-year timeframe is how it's described in code, and it addresses the big issues of the development and infrastructure and streets and those kind of things. And the sort of core, I'll just touch on the core pieces of what that is. Mike's already discussed it with the graphic detail. So outlining development blocks versus open space blocks. And again, there are some sort of hybrid blocks in between there where there's open space areas that could also have some historic buildings kept and incorporated into that open space. It sets street locations, defines where those are going to occur, the historic grid will be re-established. There's a listing of potential resource enhancements, so the kind of things that Mike alluded to about shoreline restoration. Identifies historic structures that would be best suited for adaptive reuse. Again, Mike's slide of the various structures that were identified as most useful to the site and most able to be reused. General analysis, not, again, specific development proposals, but general analysis of infrastructure things. So transportation analysis, utility analysis, and sort of a discussion of the neighborhood impacts that could occur, both positive and potentially negative from the development. There's also incorporated into this land some design guidelines to ensure high-quality design of new buildings and open space at the site. And then, we'll lay out pretty clearly implementation. So how people who want to develop on this site, be it open space or buildings, will go forward with that step by step. So then, quickly, just a few things that this general development plan will not do, just to be clear about that. It does not approve new development. It does not dictate which kind of uses will go where. It does not dictate how many buildings will go in each of those development blocks, whether it be one large-scale, large-volume building or a number of smaller spaces. Those things all have to come as a result of private action on those sites, or public action, depending on the site it is, and the financing and funding, which is not yet resolved. So that piece is for a future detailed development application. For those applications, just to reassure you that you'll have another look at anything that comes through under this plan, that what those future plans will have to do is show a number of things. They'll have to show compliance with the new zoning that we've created. They'll have to show consistency with the general development plan that we're asking for approval. So we're going to put this together, and someone's going to have to bring a detailed development plan. I want to put a building here. It shows in this plan we got approved in 2014 that that block is a development block, and therefore, I am consistent with the plan, and I will be facing the Main Street and not turning my back to it. All those kind of things to show that consistency. They'll also have to go through all the city's detailed master plan requirements. That's pretty much a parallel of site plan and design review, but that's written into the master plan code as well. Compliance with design guidelines to assure that the buildings and open space are of quality design. And then importantly, also consistency and compliance with any overlay zone requirements. So that, on this site, is subject to the Willamette River Greenway overlay, the geologic hazards overlay, the natural resource overlay district, and the flood management overlay district. So we're not proposing any changes to those overlays or the rules of those zones. Those will all continue to apply, and people will have to show in a sequential order how they comply with all those things as they submit for development.
So there's a design component to parking, but then there's also a conceptual parking plan, too. Would there be any kind of thought towards a parking plan in the conceptual plan guideline framework?
Yeah. Right now, we're going to set the plan up to show sort of just a general toolbox of different ways that people can...
I know you can't show specifics because you don't know where the buildings are going to go.
That's right. So, I mean, the illustration that Mike showed about you can't do underground parking on the site, really, because of it being on the basalt, but that we're going to clarify in the plan that people should expect to do structured parking and that that parking should be behind buildings or on the second floor of buildings and not right up front to the Main Street.
Okay.
But it's on that level of detail and not, this block is for parking and this block is for building, kind of thing. So that's, given the uncertainty with future development, that's about the level of certainty that we can provide.
Right.
So anyway, that was essentially the end of my explanation of what we're going to bring to you. We're excited about the process going forward. There's a lot of work to be done now through the end of the summer, and then again, as this project redevelops. So with that, I know Christina had asked that we would also like questions from you and then maybe a round of what you're most interested in and hearing about, oh, Christina's pointing out to me. One of the exceptions that we're going to write into this general development plan is that a detailed development plan would typically be a type-two process where there'd be these clear and objective standards, and Christina could just decide, or city staff could just decide. Because we're not at that level of detail, a typical master plan would say, we're going to put the building over here, it's going to have this use, we're not exactly sure how many square feet it's going to be, but that's something that can be decided at the staff level. We're still in a fuzzy enough stage that it's more appropriate to have a type-three process back to the planning commission to say, it's going to be this kind of a use, this size, in this location, and it's going to meet all these design guidelines, and the site plan and design would be criteria in this way. So we're going to bump up the, because there's less, a little more vagueness and less certainty, we're going to bump up the scrutiny at the next stage.
Good. I'm really supportive of that. I know it'll mean a little more work for us, but I think that this site is far too important so that we have some extra level of certainty and review, and I think that the public would probably find a lot of that very interesting as well. I think one of the things that I'm also thinking about, since you very nicely asked, is you talked about some design guidelines, and I think that those are very appropriate, particularly with building design, signage, lighting, so that there is a uniform system that, it can be different, but it has some familiarity and similarity throughout the process. So, you know, one person's sign isn't this big, another person's is small, those sort of things. And the lighting, the city's done a really nice job with the lighting in each of some of the districts. The lighting is a little different on Seventh and Downtown because they were different types of districts. And then, the other thing that, just off the top of my head, I was looking at and thinking about is, I don't really have a particular issue if, you know, a franchise wants to go in, but the franchise has to meet those design guidelines in terms of, you know, signage and lighting. And I've seen across the country where different franchisees have gone into a location, and they don't look like their typical standalone. And it may be very appropriate to have, let's just throw for an example, a Jimmy John's or a Subway or something like that, but so that it looks like it's part of the streetscape instead of like they generally do with their standalone or in a shopping center situation. So something that could make it look unique. I actually saw in New England, a, dare I say, a McDonald's that it was recognizable by the arches, but the front of it didn't look like any McDonald's that you've ever seen, and I was fairly impressed with that.
Before you go on to the question and answer portion that you were talking about, we had a similar presentation to this on December tenth. So two months have gone by, and I'm just really curious on what the progress in the plan from that date to now has been. Frankly, most of the things that you showed tonight were the same images that I remember seeing last time. I'm just curious what, how we've moved the ball forward since that date.
Well, there's been a lot more thinking about the economics of how the site will work. The blocks that you saw tonight are different than the blocks you saw last time, at least in the calculations of them. The demonstration plan's been brought forward based on community input. So I think there's been more specificity brought in the thinking, but the basic structure of the block grid and the connections to the water remain the same.
I think on our level, what, working with Ben Scholberger on the land use application is the understanding of how to implement the master plan. We've really spent the last two months on these design guidelines and really, and I always say, my goal this spring is keep asking, have we created that balance between certainty and flexibility? And sometimes we'll talk and we see ourselves going down a certainty path and we pull ourselves back, or sometimes we think, oh, this is just too flexible and we need to pull it in. So kind of a lot of what we've seen is just that back and forth of how well we have kind of, how we have implemented this to keep that balance. The understanding economics especially, I think, has helped us, knowing that this master plan is really setting a, I mean, it's a framework. I'm just thinking of this as year zero. We're kind of creating, since the framework and the sandbox that we took, that any future developer will plan, but we need to get a pretty good understanding of the economics to make that happen. I think we have been able to do that. The, some of the smaller items related to site circulation, continuing to work with ODOT, we're still continuing to do that, and I think that's where we've really done a lot of our work in the last two months. But I think what's great about it is that no matter what we do, we keep going back and realizing that this framework master plan is based on understanding the land, and it really is working within the site and the land. So we're letting that speak to us rather than forcing the solution back onto the property. So I think we've been more certain now than we were in December.
Great. And you were going to ask for questions or feedback?
Go ahead.
How did you want to go through that?
I'd be happy just to, you know, we'll be back with you in March, if I remember correctly. We'll actually be looking at recommended code changes through a mass, through a work session, so you'll start to see some meat. And so between now and then, I think it would just be helpful for us. What items are you really tracking? So when we come back, we'll kind of know what items we want to spend some extra time on with you.
Comments from the commission? Tom?
I'm still letting it all sit down. So far, I like, I mean, it's so big, and everything you say and you've presented is just exactly what I would have wanted to see. So again, it's just waiting for the particulars as it comes down. So I'm fine, no questions.
Paul?
It is overwhelming, and I, there's a lot of the obvious kinds of issues that we all know about, you know, the flooding, the environment, the open space. I think it's a good idea to have the open space come up first so that folks can go out there and take a look at the site and see how it kind of washes over them because we've all, from the outside, begin. And it's probably an important site to look at from the inside out, I think. And I guess my only comment that I would want to make this evening, I'll probably feed you some through email or whatnot, but, and the reason why I brought up parking is just so that we can set up the framework plan in such a way that we can strategize and leverage as much grant monies from Metro and the state as we possibly can through TGM, whatever resources we can get. Yeah.
Great. Zach?
I really like the idea of wrapping your head around parking. I think that's huge. Also, I mean, how it directly relates to some of the transportation problems that might exist, improving walkability, especially to the current downtown. I think it's an opportunity to improve walkability to other parts of Oregon City if we do this right, and it could also tie into things like the elevator, for instance. But also, what I'd like to keep on my radar is just public access. And I think part of keeping momentum of this moving forward is if we can have public access as soon as possible, that'd be great.
Denise?
I threw out some already, and I'm hoping that the block that is proposed for development, I'm not sure which number it was, but make sure we don't forget about locating the McLaughlin House site.
Mm-hmm.
House site, so that it doesn't get developed over with something else, because, again, as I said at a previous meeting in December, that that is really a very significant location. And I always have to point, tell people, "Well, it was kind of there," you know, but you can't really show them where it was. And then, of course, adaptive reuse of as many of the historic features as possible, because, again, people come out here because we want to see the real Oregon City, not the faux Oregon City.
I would echo the other commissioners' comments. I especially would like to see an emphasis placed on connecting the existing Main Street to this site. I think that's a key to really integrating this with the existing downtown area. And I like the idea of a connection from the bluff to the site. I think that's a great idea.
Christina, I was just going to say, one of the things in terms of that connectivity for pedestrian access is that if you think about how people sort of meander down the Main Street in Seaside towards the prom, I mean, I know sometimes they do wander in front of cars, and we don't want that, but there's plenty of activity going on, that people walk back and forth, and it's very pedestrian-friendly, plus all the signals are synchronized, so if you press the button, you can cross the street fairly easily. And it's just always kind of fun to wander up and down that. And I can see some elements of that being put on this particular site as well.
The slide that Mike showed a while back of the historic Oregon City from the couple of the Oregon City Willenmill looking north, I love, because it shows it before 99E, when it was a continuous Main Street. And that's one of my big goals, is to make sure that we actually don't create such a different district or feeling that the average person doesn't seamlessly walk between both of them. So, I mean, we can create a little sub-district, a sub-element, but it shouldn't be a campus. So that's one of our big goals, is always looking, you know, if you can't campus this, is this reintegrated? People should be really able to walk across 99E easily to go to the new old downtown.
Yeah, and that cool, holly pulp and paper sign, and then across the street.
Thank you all tonight. The other thing I was talking with Ben Scholberger today is, as this is a framework plan, we don't have a property, and we can't solve everything this year, but we can identify, you know, items and issues and parts of the plan that we want to keep on track as we move forward to these further design reviews. And that's really the goal, is, you know, we, is to make sure that we have that embedded in the plan, that we can look back at it when that time comes. And, you know, we may not be able to solve everything this year, but hopefully we can embed it in the plan.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all.
Can we take a brief break, so we get some...
Tony, can we take a few-minute break?